It affects everything.
Are we ready? City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd to order roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Why allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Seeing in hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Was it made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of August 19th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of August 26th, the Planning Commission minutes of August 7th, Planning Commission minutes of August 21st, the accounts payable report August 15th through August 28th, council's acceptance, the Human Rights Commission minutes of April 16th, the Wilmer Lake Area C V B Board minutes of June 18th, and council's information, the city all task force minutes of July 16th, and the Wilmer Main Street Board minutes of August 26th.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Was it made and seconded to approve the consent items as presented? Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Just one question, do we know why there isn't any city hall committee meeting minutes from August 20th?
That generally it had, we have to have another meeting, so they have to be in front of the committee to make sure that the, or the task force, to make sure the task force has had a chance to review those, so they're always one.
Okay.
Set of minutes behind, so that, that would be the reason for that, I believe. Is that right?
I just knew we were going to be voting on some of the information from that meeting, and I thought the other members would need to have that in front of them. Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
If I was saying aye, those opposed? That motion does carry. Next, we have a mayoral proclamation for the League of Women Voters, and I see we have a couple Leaguers with us today, so thank you so much for showing up tonight, so. Proclamation for the League of Women Voters Centennial, City of Wilmer. Whereas the League of Women Voters celebrates its 100th anniversary, and whereas the League of Women Voters was founded on, for the purpose of completing full enfranchisement of women and increasing effectiveness of women's voices in furthering better government, and whereas the League of Women Voters of Minnesota was founded in 1919 after state ratification of the 19th Amendment, and the League of Women Voters of the United States was founded in 1920 after the 19th Amendment was ratified by our country, and whereas we recognize and celebrate a century of activism by League of Women Voters, whereas we recall our nation's history through a lens of diversity, equality, equity, inclusion, acknowledging the hard truth that in our origins, the League of Women Voters was late in joining to help protect all voters at the polls. That was a little bit long, okay. And whereas we remind our citizens that democracy depends on their participation through educating themselves on the issues through voting, whereas the League of Women Voters of Wilmer Area has served our community with dedication and integrity for 60-plus years, where they're, with their commitment to making democracy work for women and men throughout community education on public policy topics, holding nonpartisan voter registration drives, and hosting informative candidate forums for our local municipal school board and county elections. Now therefore, I, Marv Calvin, Mayor of the City of Wilmer, do hereby proclaim September 9th, 2019, as League of Women Voters' Centennial Day, and congratulate the League of Women Voters, Wilmer Area, on the Minnesota State League's 100th anniversary, and I have affixed the seal of the City of Wilmer and signed my name to it as well. So congratulations and thank you, and appreciate the, being, given the honor of being able to read this proclamation. So if one of the Leaguers would like to come forward and receive the proclamation, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have a couple of the Leaguers, Jandall, and I'm miss, I'm forgetting your name, so.
Cheryl Elversen.
Cheryl Elversen, so thank you for being here tonight, so. Okay, next, we have the open forum. First on the agenda is Glenn Negan, and just let us know if you reside in the city or outside of the city, even though most of us know that already. Good to see you again.
I'm Glenn Negan, I live in the City of Wilmer, and at the last meeting, I was here to promote a presentation to commemorate September 11th. We're doing it on September 10th at the city auditorium at 6:30 PM, and since then, there's been some feedback that's not always positive from some people, and they're promoting a minute and 20-second video where our presenter, William Federer, did a presentation for a Virginia Sheriff's Department on radical Islam, and it's about a minute and 20-second video with some excerpts of some things that he said. Having said that, back in the 1980s, I kind of got thrust into doing some training. FBI and VCA came in and said, there's a group within 25 miles of Wilmer that's training, and one of the courses is how to kill a cop and get by with it, and I kind of got interested in that because I was officer survival training at that time, and I started researching, and then four to six months into it, Wilmer PD was hosting the Minnesota Crime Prevention Officers Association, and I got asked, you think you can put together a four-hour post-approved program for that? And I said, yeah, I think so, and I did it, and I kept getting asked to do it again and again, and I've done it in multiple states or did, and a couple of times at a national law enforcement conference in St. Louis. As a result, I got a little bit of name recognition, but then as the lead-up to the first war in Iraq came, the Minnesota National Guard and Army Reserve were getting some feedback that some of these groups might be trying to gather intelligence on these military units, so then I got asked to do a training class for the Wilmer National Guard unit, and at that particular meeting, I recognized some people that I knew were active in that place, you know, how to kill a cop and get by with it. They were like brother-in-laws and sister-in-laws to people. I also recognized a police officer who was in that guard unit that was friends with an extremist from a different county, and within five days of that presentation, the Candy High County Sheriff, the Wilmer Police Chief, and the commander of the guard unit all got letters from that other leader of that extremist group, and it was basically an attempt to shut the program down and shut me down. While that showed the military that there was a need for, because they had so much detail in those letters of what I talked about, that it's kind of made them fearful, and so I ended up doing those training classes from the Minnesota-Dakota border to almost.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You bet. Next, we have Ms. Heidi Ammon, state if you reside in the city or outside of the city.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Heidi Ammon, and I reside in the City of Wilmer. I'd like to thank you first and foremost for accepting me to be here this night with the public forum. I'm here tonight to, I can't even think here, I'm here tonight to invite the public to a public event on September 10th, as Mr. Negan alluded to. It is a Patriot Day event. Patriot Day is actually 9/11, and that was a day that was brought forward after the 9/11/2001 terror attacks in New York City and on the United States. I believe it was President Bush who commemorated the day, Patriot Day, after that. Anyway, we have a group, and we are having a nationally-known speaker and bestselling author coming to Wilmer. We are so blessed to be having this gentleman come to Minnesota, he's on a Minnesota tour, and he's going to be stopping here in Wilmer. We chose to do it on September 10th as opposed to the 11th because in Wilmer, as we all know, Wednesday night is church night, so we chose to do it on the 10th. It's going to be at the Wilmer City Auditorium, which is 311 Southwest 6th Street, and we're just, again, we're very honored to be having this gentleman come here, and this night is to remember 9/11/2001, but at the same time, we are going to be honoring those who sacrificed and served, and those who lost their lives that day in 2001, and those who continue to serve today. William Federer is going to be talking this evening on courageous patriotic women of the Revolutionary War. He has a plethora of information, as I said, he's a historian, he's a theologian, he's a diverse author, and he's just, again, we're very, very blessed to be having him, and we welcome the whole public, but we totally encourage our present and past law enforcement officers, first responders, flight attendants, I was mentioning my husband, and he said, really, our first responders in New York City were very vital, we all know that, but he said, really, think about it. It was a flight attendant who was the very first responder. She made that call to her airline that she worked for, and then obviously, we know what happened to her life. But we are honoring everybody, and we just hope that the public will, will join us that evening. We have local dignitaries are going to be speaking along with Mr. Federer, so we look forward to welcoming everybody, and we look forward to everybody being there night, that night. Thank you so much, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, I should say, 6:30 is the beginning, and the War Memorial will open at 5:30.
Next, we have Mr. Jed Bendix, state if you reside in the city or outside of the city.
I reside outside the city. I worked at Rice Hospital for the last 31 and 1/2 years, so I recognize many people here. I'm here to announce an upcoming walk in downtown Wilmer to celebrate our anniversary on October 5th. The event starts at 9:00 AM at the Goodness Coffee Shop with the guest speaker at 9 o'clock. The walk starts at 9:30, which takes place in downtown Wilmer. The purpose of the walk is to show gratitude for being part of a hard-working, diverse community. Please join us on October 5th at 9:00 AM at the Goodness Coffee Shop. Note fee to attend, your participation would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a public hearing on an ordinance enacting the floodplain management program. I will at this time open the public hearing, Mr. Dave Ramstead, I'm sorry, Dr. Dave Ramstead.
Mayor, council, tonight we have staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance enacting the floodplain management, and a resolution to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. We have been vetting it since May, and just recently ran it past the committee, which approved it and forwarded it here for today's public hearing. While not adopting the map may save a handful of homeowners in the floodplain from the need to buy flood insurance when they have an outstanding mortgage, it also prevents many from buying a home in the floodplain because they find it difficult or impossible to get the necessary flood insurance that their lender of choice requires. In addition, it also prevents the code enforcement of floodproof construction, and would prevent destruction of property from instances of flooding. Finally, it also prevents homeowners that are not in the floodplain from getting NFIP-backed flood insurance for rain-related flooding. The financial impact really is very little. The potential costs are homeowner-born, and there's a handful of them, if they are in the floodplain, which we can't quite determine exactly, but as far as we know, there's seven. And they can get out of the floodplain with a Loma or Lomar, which is a letter-of-map amendment or a letter-of-map revision, which should be about $2,000 to $3,000, we estimate. But there is a route for getting out of the floodplain for those few homeowners that we believe are in. There's negligible costs with floodplain code enforcement through the administration of the building official, as part of his routine. The additional cost to constructing, constructing a home in the floodplain is negligible, nonexistent, because it's really not an additive aspect to the home, it's a different configuration, whether you raise the property one foot above the base flood elevation, or you, you need to put the mechanical systems above the base flood elevation, or the electrical systems. It's just a matter of putting them in different places, and it's not really adding or subtracting Lastly, presumably, when floodmaps are not adopted, all property owners across the entire city pay a higher homeowners' insurance. Now, we haven't been able to verify this, but this is what I've been told by the DNR. So with that, and the vetting, it's my recommendation that we adopt the ordinance and pass the resolution to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Any questions?
Thank you. At this time, the public meet, hearing is open. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, and have the city join the National Flood Plain Insurance Program.
Second.
Was it made and seconded to have the city participate in the National Flood Insurance Program as presented by Dr. Ramstead? Discussion? Questions for Dr. Ramstead? Councilmember Meske.
Just, it's not a question for me, but it's just one that I've been reading and people talking about. The floodplain is defined on a map, and there are currently a handful of folks that are in that, and you've explained how to get out of it, and that the ones that are required would be those that have an outstanding mortgage. Is there any chance that map is redrawn later on to include other larger swaths of Wilmer, so others would be having to get mandatory flood insurance?
The flood map is redrawn probably about every 10 years. Our map, the last one is from the 70s, and that one was done actually by boots-on-the-ground with survey equipment. This last map was done by a system called LiDAR, which is a satellite-based system. So the possibility of this line moving back and forth slightly is, is possible. Do I think it's going to be dramatic? No, because the 1970s versus the current one are pretty darn close. And even so, there, there are spot elevation ways of getting your particular property written out of the floodplain, so they have, they have a means or a system for, for rectifying your situation.
Thank you.
Just a comment to questions.
Seeing in hearing none, we're ready to vote, this is a resolution, this. We got ahead of ourselves. Or can I do it afterwards?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I heard the motion correctly, this is the motion to introduce the resolution to participate in the flood insurance program.
Right.
I'd recommend having the vote on that and then making the motion to adopt the ordinance after this action.
Okay. So the motion that's on the table is to participate in the flood insurance program. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a consideration to publish the floodplain management ordinance by summary, and that is a recommendation of staff as well. This particular vote takes six affirmative votes from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if I may interrupt, I would recommend first, adopting the ordinance and assigning it a number, so I would recommend that motion first, and then second, the motion that you just referenced, to publish it by summary.
I would make the motion as recommended by legal counsel.
Second.
Was it made and seconded to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish, and publish it enacting the flood management plan? Discussion. All in favor of the motion? I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next is the consideration to publish the floodplain management ordinance by summary. This takes six affirmative votes from the council.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the floodplain management ordinance by summary. Additional discussion? Councilmember Meske.
I know we've talked about this before, but if we're going to do this by summary, we are going to make sure that this ordinance, if it's in entirety, is available on the city website, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And also, I believe that last time, we asked that it be available at city hall as well, correct?
Correct, and we also placed it on Facebook, through the city's website on Facebook.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. I just want to thank staff for your work on this. I know that it was a labor-intensive process, as you stated in your, in your notes to us. You started working on this on May 20th, and to present it the way you did, I talked a little bit on the radio today on open mic, and just thank you for the work that you did. I know that we tried to do this a number of times in the past in the City of Wilmer, and so thank you for your tenacity to get it and keep it in front of us.
I appreciate that very much, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Works Safety Committee report, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, as I was out on family vacation two weeks ago, and the meeting was chaired by our vice chair, is it appropriate for myself or my vice chair to?
It's your choice as the chair.
Okay. Would you be most comfortable with me reading it, or would you like to tackle that?
I'll go ahead, I'll do it.
Councilwoman Osmus.
Okay. The Public Works Public Safety met on Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, in Conference Room 1 at the city office building. Present was myself, Audrey Nelson, Fernando Alvarado, and also Public Works Director Sean Christensen, Park and Rec Director Rob Baumgarten, Engineering Administrative Assistant Kelsey Del Bosque. Meeting was called to order at 5:15. First order of business was a resolution having to do with the gun range cleaning bid award. Staff brought forth for approval the proposal for the gun range professional lead decontamination and ballistic block replacement. Staff is currently trained to clean the range, observation room, and classroom with a HEPA vacuum, but further annual deep cleaning is required to decrease exposure limits of lead. The blocks are due for replacement as they are reaching their maximum capacity, and there is no more rubber material available to encapsulate the bullets. The city received two quotes from Green Bay Lead Services LLC, being the low bid in the amount of $34,035 plus $7,500 per additional cleaning trip if lead testing fails. And I will introduce that motion to have Green Bay Lead Service LLC replace the lead decontamination with additional $7,500 for additional trips if needed.
Second.
Was it made and seconded to approve contract with Green Bay Lead Services for replacing the ballistic blocks and professional lead, lead decontamination cleaning with an option of an additional $7,500 if additional trips are needed? Discussion. Councilwoman Meske.
Has, we were monitoring usage to, to do some of these things, are we seeing an uptick in usage of the facility?
We did kind of discuss that, but I'd have to turn that over to staff, for we didn't have exact numbers, I don't believe.
Yeah, councilmembers, I wouldn't say we've seen an uptick in that, I would say it's been fairly steady. You know, we could pull exact numbers for you, but at this point, I, I would say, no, generally, no, it has not increased in usage.
Revenue stream, is it the same? Is it up or down?
No, it'd be about the same, not covering the costs.
Sure.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. We did have a lengthy conversation about it, and staff, I think, is also tracking some possible changes in some regulations that we might be facing next year, and so I think this is something that probably has to stay on our radar with what we might have to do to continue using the facility with that, and so I don't, I think there, there should be more details to follow with that, but it sounds like staff are, are working hard on that, and will be bringing that back to us when they know more about the changes in the regulations.
I'm assuming, sorry, I'm assuming the regulations are why, I mean, we've had members offer to clean the facility, but I'm assuming this HEPA filter thing is a, is a regulation that we have to abide by?
That's what we, that was what we talked about last year, but.
Yeah, right.
I guess, Madam Chair, my, my, my question would be is, did we replace the, the blocks last year, or did we delay that until this year? Remember?
I thought we replaced them two years ago.
Okay. And then another thing that we were told is that if we decrease the rate of what we charged, that that would show us an increase in uptick, and I think that might be the.
That was, I was alluding to.
That was where you were headed?
Yep. Because we did lower the.
We lowered the rate.
The fee. And we also had a lot of discussion about the issue before, two years ago, when we were talking about this and having to remove the backstops about how they were put up differently, they were trying to take efforts to not do all of the activity in one lane, and to spread it out, to get more usage out of the blocks, I mean, that was all taken into, to consideration with replacing them this time.
We have a motion to execute, execute an agreement for gun range cleaning services with Green Bay Lead Services. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Nope. Question?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Meske.
I was just going to say, I know we had talked about it a couple years ago, about monitoring usage and revenues and so on, I'm happy to hear that with maybe changes in regulations and stuff, if we can do that, that would be very helpful for future consideration on what we're going to do with the gun range, but I understand where we're sitting right now.
Councilwoman Nelson.
I think that's sort of what staff was asked to do too, when they come back with additional information on the usage, I just don't think it was available at the time, and this is a commitment that we had made to do.
I understand that.
So I, but I do think we need to follow up with that, too.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So who decides if additional trips are needed, and is it $7,500 per trip, or?
Yes, with a max. I can defer to staff if it could be.
Public Works Director Christensen.
Members of the council, that additional trips are determined by a third-party testing, and so what happens is after they've cleaned one time, let's say, or after they've done their cleaning services, then they'll, there's a third-party tester that comes in, which is included in the cost, in that first cost there, they'll come in and test and see if they're at the HUD standards, and the reason it's HUD standards, it's because there's a children under 16, I believe, is the age present in the building, and so that lowers the standards or raises the standards, depending on how you look at it, as far as cleaning goes. If they're not to those levels, then, then Green Bay Lead will be required to come back and, and do it again until they are.
So they don't come the same day when the cleaning gets done?
No, at that point, Councilmember Fagerly, we'd have to schedule them to come back and do that. That's why we do this when it's, you typically try to do this when it's not as much shooting going on, so that we can have it shut down, have it cleaned, and, and then move on with that, with the system at that point.
I just assumed they'd finish cleaning, and they would stay there until the inspection was done to see if additional cleaning?
If that's a possibility, that, we'll absolutely have them do that, but my, my feeling is that they come in, they're scheduled a number of days, they do the cleaning, then they schedule a third-party tester to come in and test when they can't, or, you know, whenever it fits into their schedule, and while Green Bay Lead moves on to another project at that point.
So who does the cleaning for the sheriff's department?
That's also the same company that comes out and does that.
Are the bids similar, do you know?
Yeah. I think a long time ago, we had talked about, I believe they are very similar, so.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes, Councilwoman Osmus.
Okay, item number three, we discussed, this is for information only, was about the row park. Staff brought forth for information the discussion of potential row park improvements proposed by the Kiwanis Club. A five-year plan was proposed to the Parks and Recreation Board for various improvements, such as a new sign, more picnic tables, benches, repairing steps, and the parking lot area. And we also had a pretty lengthy discussion about the signage there, if it was going to look like our major parks, how does it become the Kiwanis', and are they committed then to continue to, the upkeep on it? So they just, there needs to be some work out there. And also, we also talked about on the north side, that Flower Garden Path area that needs some TLC and some attention, and it was just for information that they will be addressing some of those. Any other discussion on that? Okay, item number four was MinDOT and ADA pedestrian improvements. Staff brought forth for information the MinDOT ADA pedestrian improvements to take place 225 feet west of Fairing Street to Lakeland Drive. The plan reviewed will be submitted in October of 2020, with bid letting scheduled for January of 2021. There is no financial impact on the city for this project. It was for information only that they were going to be doing some ADA approved improvements there. And I will submit those minutes for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have Finance Committee report, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. The Finance Committee met at City Hall on August 22nd at 5:15. Councilmembers in attendance were Nelson, Alvarado, Osmus, and Fagerly. Others present were Finance Director Okens, Airport Manager Eric Rundigan, and Park and Rec Coordinator Eric Banks. Our first item, and it is now going to be two resolutions and a motion, was regarding the grant to authorize the federal grant approval and set the final budget. Eric Rundigan was present to inform the committee that the city had received notification of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration. The grant would cover 90% of the airport runway, 13/31 taxiway A, and West Taxi Lane's pavement maintenance project. Bids were opened on June 12th, 2019. The city received one bid for $868,266.50. The grant application was then submitted to MinDOT and the FFA by FAA, excuse me, by June 28th, 2019. The total estimated cost of the project is $1,008,254.50, which is split 90% federal, 5% state aid, and 5% local. The estimated city of Wilmer cost for the project would be $50,412.73, or $4,412.73 over the $46,000 presently in the capital improvement program. Staff indicated that in light of the Public Works pot patch equipment coming in approximately $48,000 less than budget, it would be staff's recommendation to reappropriate $4,500 of the excess to cover the shortfall in the airport project. After some discussion, there were two actions recommended. I was informed that we need to divide, the federal grant needs to be a resolution, the state grant needs to be a motion. Those two were brought forward, and I will enter a motion now to accept the federal grant in the amount of $907,429.05.
Second.
I think those might be reversed, how we do that.
If we need a motion for the, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a motion for the federal grant, that's just an acceptance of the grant, the state of Minnesota requires the resolution, so just so that's clear.
I stand corrected, and I'll correct my motion to be a resolution for the federal, for the, a motion for the federal grant.
Correct.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. Now I will enter a motion for the resolution for $50,412.73 for the state.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes, Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. Our second action was to set the final project budget for the airport pavement management project and reallocate the $4,500 as recommended. And I will enter that motion, second.
I believe that should be a resolution, because we're re-appropriating dollars.
Right. I will enter that motion as a resolution.
Motion made and seconded for a resolution to adjust the budget appropriately. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes as well, Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. I just would like to let Mr. Rundigan speak. I think it's, this is very interesting, and I know he shared a lot of information with us, and so, if you would be willing.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a quick overview again, these are FAA discretionary dollars, and so at the end of the year, at the end of the FAA's fiscal year, which goes through September 30th, they look at dollars that have been turned back and then rank programs or rank projects and their importance. And so with the help of our consulting engineers, Bolton and Mink, we were able to put together a good project here that is pavement maintenance, again, working towards extending the life of the current pavement, rather than waiting till it's too far gone and then milling and overlaying and making the project considerably more. And so because these are discretionary funds, our normal entitlement is $150,000 a year. Of course, this is nine years, well, the math is quite a little different, six years, maybe seven years of normal entitlements. And so this is a great project for the city of Wilmer, for the airport. And I do want to thank Bolton and Mink, as well as our city staff, especially support staff members who really worked hard, because things came in quickly, say, the day of a council meeting, and is it a resolution, is it a motion, all of those kinds of things. Our city support staff did a great job making sure that everything was where it needed to be, and again, lots of support from Silas at Bolton and Mink as well. So lots of thank yous to go around, and thank you to the council for being understanding of some of our kind of short timelines that we had with this program. So again, a good program for the city of Wilmer and for the airport that will extend the life of our runway and taxiways for years to come, so I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a, actually two resolutions, to authorize the Warhawks rental lease and advertising agreement. Eric Banks from the Recreation Department was present at the committee to present and explain the request to approve the lease and advertising agreements for the Wilmer Warhawks for the 2019-2020 hockey season. This will be the fourth year that the Wilmer Warhawks have been in Wilmer, and with all the annual leases, with all the leases being annual leases to this point. The lease will generate $44,500 from the ICE rental office and locker room space. This is an increase of $1,000 from the previous year. The city will also receive an additional $8,000 from the advertising rights. These are two separate agreements, and so we will have two separate resolutions, and I will enter the first resolution now to recommend the approval of the lease for the ICE office and locker rooms in the amount of $44,500.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution to execute a lease agreement with the Blizzard LLC, Wilmer Warhawks. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes, Councilwoman Nelson.
The second resolution is to approve the lease for advertising, and I believe that amount is 8,000, and I will enter that now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce a resolution to execute the advertising agreement with the Wilmer Warhawks. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Meski.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes, Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. The rest of our agenda were discussion items. We did review and discuss the July monthly financial report, and Mr. Okens is not here this evening, but that should be available at our next meeting to review. The upcoming meeting schedule, which includes some additional meetings to receive the budget information, and also, we did receive sections of the 2018 financial report audit for review that we will review at a future meeting. There was no other business to come before the committee, and we adjourned at 6:30, and I would enter a motion to accept the minutes now.
So move.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? City Hall site selection. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, I was told I may have to log back in. Mayor, members of the council, I won't worry with the details of the history of this task force or the city hall site selection, but moving right on to in your agenda, the current circumstance, task force recently met and discussed additional possible sites and space designed for joint city hall, community center, and the potential to put that on the current community center site. Staff was directed to prepare a presentation on this site, taking into consideration the following site priorities. Acquisition costs, internal department efficiencies, ample and convenient parking, impact to city tax rolls, demolition costs, convenient and accessible traffic flow, displaced employee cost, and inconvenience to residents, high visibility, and the fiber optic costs. And if you'll recall, these were the majority, if not all, of the items that the task force has been comparing all sites with over the last couple of years. That being said, I've got, actually, I'm not going to do that first. First, I'm going to do this. On the second page, right after that.
I'm going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay. Okay.
(pause)
Ready to come out of recess? Go ahead, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I was promised it was not something I said, so thank you for letting me do that. Continue. All right, as I was mentioning before, on those items that, uh, that, that were discussed at, for all the sites, so that we're comparing apples to apples on all these, um, different site selection. First one being acquisition costs, and I don't have a fancy PowerPoint presentation for you, but I did, I do believe I've answered all the questions, and I can open it up for further questions or discussion on each of these items. So under acquisition costs, of course, the city already owns this property. Let's make it switch back and forth here. That property being the shaded area here that is existing community center site, and believe it or not, the city owns, it's just over or right around the five-acre mark. There are multiple lots there that, uh, most people may not realize that the city already owns, but we do in fact have five acres of, of property there. So acquisition costs effectively would be zero since we already own that property. Any other comments, statements on that? On that line item? I'll, I'll just keep going, and you guys chime in if something comes up. Internal department efficiencies, with a combined building, that of the community center, I believe, will be more efficient. Um, you've got one site, you've got one stop shop, if you will, at least for those two facilities, both for, um, people that are needing and using city hall, as well as the, uh, individuals of all ages that use the community center. Um, we've got one site there, we've got one site for the, everything from the custodians to the, uh, to the directors, to the council that, that use, that use each year, each and each of those buildings. Ample and convenient parking, of course, again, we own about five acres, there's plenty of room that we can put parking on that site, whether, you know, we can decide the configuration later, but definitely plenty of room. Convenient being, in my mind, yes, it's right near the building, either of those two buildings, and, uh, access off of two different streets that can, that can get into that site. Impact the city tax rolls, in my mind, the discussion there has centered around, are we taking private property off of the tax rolls? And in this case, of course, we are not, since we already own this property. The only impact, if you could conceive it that way, is that we wouldn't obviously sell this property, not that we were considering that anyway, but sell this property to someone that would pay taxes. Um, at this point, we already own it, so we don't have, we don't have any additional, um, detriment to the tax rolls.
Uh, Mr. Christensen, could you just go back just for a second and talk about the agreement with the testing lab, uh, after the ample and convenient parking, just, uh, to make sure that everybody understands that we are aware that there is a, uh, signed agreement with the testing lab for parking spaces, and that that was reviewed as well?
Yes, sir, council, mayor, and members of the council, that, while I don't know the number of parking spaces, I want to say it's 10 to 12 maybe, there are, there's a...
I thought it was 10.
Was it?
Does anybody remember?
I think it was 10. There's an agreement with the poultry testing labs, it's the new building that would be just to the, to the west of this, well, it is to the west of the existing community center, but would be to the west of this facility, um, near the southern part of that parking lot, in, in turn, for them to pay for some of the resurfacing of that parking lot, we allow them, and we have an agreement in place that would allow, that allows, I think, 10, I think you're right, 10 spots, that, uh, allows their staff to use, and, uh, at this point, I would anticipate maintaining that, that agreement. I don't know why we couldn't, there's plenty of room there for an additional 10 spots with, regardless of, of what we do for our parking. So they've got a, a, a door out the south end of their building, and a sidewalk out the south side of their building that goes to that, to their parking spaces, I don't see why we can't continue to, to honor that agreement. Demolition costs, the only demolition would be that of the community center building itself, and, um, the fact that that's a, a fairly, or quite a bit older building, I don't think that would be a significant cost. I don't have the exact numbers, I can get those as we get further down the road, obviously we'll, we'll want that, that information. But, uh, with that being the only major demolition cost, I guess, outside of potential for pulling up some of the existing parking lot, depending on where the, the sites, or the building sites go, um, there's very insignificant, uh, demolition costs for this, this particular site. Convenient and accessible traffic flow, as I mentioned earlier, High Avenue is on the south, um, Business 71 service drives on the north, there is not much more convenient than that to have two, two streets that are through streets, um, one being, you know, direct access to the highway, two, then you don't get much more convenient than that. It, uh, very convenient for multiple different sites, both for safety, for EMS, and for the, the public that, that wishes to access. Displaced employee costs or inconvenience to the residents, two employees will be temporarily, um, displaced, that being the two that are, that are out at the, um, community center, and so we'd have to find a, a spot for, for those two employees to, to temporarily, um, reside as far as office goes. Obviously, we'd be doing some of that informa, some of that anyway, with the programming and things of that nature for the community center. And my opinion is most residents drive to city hall now, there's not, uh, that much walk-in traffic, and so, uh, the inconvenience to the residents would be minimal. If you're driving anyway, they can drive to this site, or downtown site, or south end, or north end, or whichever, doesn't, I don't think it, I don't think that, uh, is significant. T1 line costs, I did check on this charter internet, it's already, already exists to the site, so that's a non-issue. And, um, the next one, high visibility, I just put very, um, it's on the, the biggest entrance to the north side of town, or from the north, so it would be very visible, probably one of the most visible sites that, that, uh, you all have been looking at. And the last site there, the last comment there was connected to the auditorium, which was no longer an item, and so I didn't, I didn't answer that one. Obviously, it's not connected to the auditorium. I included this map, it's not in your agenda because it came in late, but this map that is, for those at home, I guess, or on the, that'll be on the, on the, uh, taped version of this, shows that with the shaded area, shows a little bit of the vicinity, obviously it's right across the highway from, from Robins Island, it's, it shows both Business 71 and the, uh, High Avenue on the south, it shows the proximity of the other areas there to the lakes. Um, and so I think that, uh, encapsulates it pretty well, so if you had any other questions, I'd sure be willing to, to answer, or obviously you could ask any of the committee members as well.
So at this point, are there any questions from council on the recommended site that is being recommended? As chair of the, uh, task force, are there any comments you'd like to make, Councilmember Schwantus?
Thank you, I was going to say, I don't have a question, but I would, I appreciate the presentation, thank you very much for that. I also want to recognize that at the last meeting, we had three different contractors who came and presented a possible layout for the location, and I want to thank them for the work that they did, the time and the effort, and it really allowed us to be able to envision the space as a possible site for the city hall and the community center together. You can see that that's sort of an half-H shape, you might say, and I wondered how we would use that, um, extra leg going out, and there were some real creative ideas, including stormwater retention pond there with a walking path around it, uh, there were bike paths that were coming into the site, um, one recommended, uh, um, a rain garden that could be used as a demonstration to show community members the possibilities and things that they could do. Um, it just, there were some really great ideas, and how that space could really work beautifully for a joint setting, and, um, uh, there was certainly ample parking, um, yeah, I just, I, I want to recognize the work and effort that went into that, and, um, uh, the layouts really were very attractive looking and presented a number of good options, so.
Just Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, not being part of the committee, you're privy to the, uh, discussion or the presentation, I think, gives a, here's an outside perspective, at least of mine. Proximity-wise, I guess early on, I hadn't thought of this location, um, in terms of the, the benefits that it might have, but certainly, I think, in terms of visibility and proximity to Robins Island, as we all know, we've done extensive amounts of work, and we're going to continue to make improvements at Robins Island, that's a, a community gem that we really want to have kind of on the forefront as a, as an asset to our community, and so I think a site like this lends well to that. Um, a question that I would have, I, I think that it's probably a, a foregone conclusion that combining two facilities together, there's going to be some significant cost savings in doing that. Um, but with one of the facilities, um, named a project for the local option sales tax, how, how do we differentiate between the two? How do we delineate how funds are spent on a facility such as this, when you have a, a combined facility, but you're getting dollars for half of it from one source versus dollars for the other half? Is that something that's been discussed?
Councilmember Schwantus, do you want to answer that, or should we ask our city administrator to answer that?
Go ahead, that's fine.
Administrator Grammets?
Mayor and city council members, uh, just, that'd just be an, an example of a, of an accounting, uh, process, where as we, as we bid it, we can have the numbers split out, uh, and we'll just account for it in that manner. I would actually anticipate that the community center is probably going to cost more than $2 million, so the point is probably moot, uh, but it would, it would be something finance would, uh, keep track of.
Okay, so there's no legal hurdles or extraordinary things to, to, to jump, um, to make sure that we're within bounds of our local option sales tax dollars and how they're spent?
Well, I think there'd be the legal requirement, yes, uh, but there's no financial hurdles that, that we would have to, uh, jump in order to make that, uh, an accurate financial explanation of where the money went. It's, I think it'd be fairly easy.
Okay, thank you.
Just some comments or questions. Councilmember Meskey.
Well, I would reiterate some of the comments that, uh, Councilmember Schwantus was talking about with, uh, groups that came in, but, but that creativity we asked for, that they showed, was actually not really what we asked for, so when we asked for that creativity, I think it could be even bigger, because we were actually just for practicality of how much square foot could fit on this property in different ways, and they threw all those creative elements in to show you what you could do beyond the space, which was very nice to be able to see that. I know in here, you talked about displacing employees, also addressed the concept of where we would deal with community centerpiece at that same time. Yeah, Councilmember Meskey, of course, that unfortunately becomes a programming issue, and so I have, you know, full confidence in, in Rob and his staff that they would end up having to, we'd have to reprogram those, those, uh, we have to displace the programs, I should say, so we're not, basically new location for some of those, for some of those programs while we were under construction.
I guess what I'm trying to tell is, we've addressed, we're addressing that issue, because if this was the site, we're very much aware that we have to continue our programming, and we will be doing that. All those details are not worked out yet of where it might be.
Yeah, we're not going to cancel programming.
No.
Uh, City Administrator Grammets, uh, I, I know you wanted to make a comment about that as well.
Yeah, I, I think just to, uh, give a little bit more background, I think, you know, the staff has identified that as an issue, that we want to continue programming, and that as we get closer to a timeline, that we can actually go in and talk to other property owners, we'll be able then to say, okay, we need property from this date to that date, uh, and, uh, we need X number of square, uh, feet, uh, and so we will be looking at facilities within the community that can, uh, operate on a temporary basis for the programming that we currently have. So when we get to that point, we'll likely be entering into some leases, uh, you know, uh, for a specified period of time until they can move back in.
That was one, and then also can you address the, I mean, that we are going to deal with, we've, we've talked many times before about the heating, the downtown heating system, that what our plans are for the, if we were to go with this spot for the employees that would remain in the current city hall building? Chair, Councilmember Meskey, they, in the CIP, there was a full, um, boiler system scheduled or, or proposed. I've been asked since that time to, to look into the possibility of it, call it a temporary, but it would be probably a year's worth of time type boiler system that would, that would provide heat in the winter, because it, that is kind of a necessity, um, so we would get that taken care of, one way or the other. Obviously, the, we don't want to have to put an expensive system in that just gets tore up or removed or whatever, you know, there's, maybe there's a possibility of, of putting a system in that can be used elsewhere, or, um, but we're still looking into some of those items. Like I say, best case, find some type of temporary system that would, that would work for hopefully one year, and, uh, and, and accommodate those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I disagree with that, I think you should put a full system in, and then we sell the building. Someone's going to buy it, so.
That isn't that bad of a building. At this point, uh, Councilmember Bakerly, I'm not proposing we demo the building, that's going to be for this body to decide.
Okay.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Osmus.
I was just signaling you over to Administrator...
Administrator Grammets?
Yeah, as some, some of you already know, uh, mayor and, and council members, that the municipal utilities already has a, a temporary boiler system set up in their, in their backyard to run all the needs, uh, for, uh, for the city, the current system. And so having a portable come in would not be out of line if that's the decision the council wanted to go with. Uh, again, that's a decision that you have not yet made, whether you want to put in a new system or go with a temporary system, that's something that can happen in, you know, real soon here, but, uh, eventually, that's something the council will have to decide, and then, uh, we'll, staff will go in whichever direction you point us in.
Just some comments or questions?
That is all for the presentation, members of the council and mayor, but the recommendation, of course, would be to approve the current community center site and direct staff to proceed with requests for proposals for the construction manager at risk for city hall and community center as a combined facility, and also for architecture design.
So that's three actions. Correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I might actually recommend that you make that as a resolution, and I can certainly draft the resolution, uh, for execution tomorrow. It wouldn't be anything different than what, uh, city engineer has just recommended, it would just address each of those items, probably in a numbered list, and I would additionally recommend that the resolution include a provision that the previous resolution the council passed to identify Block 25 as the preferred site be superseded by this new resolution. So I'd recommend that all be introduced as a resolution tonight.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go to the, to the committee here a little bit, because at the committee meeting, we'd talked about it being three actions. I'm fine with doing it in one action, I have no problem with that, if the council's comfortable with that. Uh, Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be fine with that as one action, but I would add one more thing to the resolution, and that is that at the last city council meeting, we, um, through the local option sales tax, um, there was work to identify a construction manager at risk for the community center as an alternate, and so if we could include in there that we would drop that alternate, um, from, from the local option sales tax listing. Does that make sense?
I almost think that needs to be a separate action.
Okay.
I think we'd want that to be a separate action, so, so we get a full council discussion.
Then I would make a motion, uh, to approve the resolution as presented by City Attorney Robert Scott.
Second.
Motion has been sec, made and seconded to, can you pull that back up for me? Oh, I've got it, I'm sorry. Uh, for the council to approve the current community center site and direct staff to proceed with request for proposals for a construction manager at risk for city hall and community center combined, and also engage architectural design services. Motion been made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know this has been a, a subject that we've been on for a while, and, uh, something that's been at times controversial in the public, and we've, we've dealt with certain issues at this table back and forth, um, but I do believe that it is important to do our due diligence on all of these things, even though it takes extra time, and even though it can be arduous and, uh, sometimes difficult. I assume that this, this action that we're doing tonight does not lock us into anything beyond exactly what the resolution is worded, in other words, we're, we're beginning down this path, but if we are to find something alarming or something that we're uncomfortable with, it, it leaves us time to, uh, to further examine that and explore that and determine how we move on further?
I would believe that to be true.
Okay.
As a body. I mean, individually, as a task force, we can do it currently, but after this motion would pass, or this resolution would pass, that would make it the body's decision, so you're taking it away from the, um, four people plus the mayor and staff, and you're moving it to the full body for any adjustments. I mean, the, the, the task force is continuing, going to be able to continue to do their work, but any changes to that would then have to come back to the full body.
Okay, yeah.
I believe that that's probably what you would want, correct?
Oh, correct.
When we're getting...
Well, correct.
When we're getting down this far.
And more important than what I want, just the overall context, is the questions that I've had asked of me from various people, you know, if you guys decide to go ahead and do this, then is it a done deal? Is there no more say? Is it, you know, is it a train that's already going down the tracks at 50 miles an hour? And I said, no, I don't believe that to be the truth, as with previous actions or previous, you know, we do our due diligence, and we head down a certain direction, and if something arises, I believe that it's still within our purview to make sure that we're making wise decisions. And so I just believe it's important for the public to know and understand that as well as us.
Additional discussion, councilmembers.
I would recommend, just from what we've heard from some of the lessons of Robins Island, is that we move very quickly to engaging a broader audience of what they want that to be used for, and what that needs to look like. And I know we have a task force, and we had a local option sales task force for these two things. I don't know if simply combining them is enough. I think we need to cast a little broader on some of those pieces to get public input there. I know we've done public input on other pieces, but we want to make sure, and this is where I'm getting my feedback from what you were just saying, is that we want to make sure that we, all the public needs are kind of heard of what needs to be in the design of this place. I think this, personally, I think this is the right location. I just don't know what's going to go on in there as far as the community centerpiece are concerned, and I want to get as much feedback on that piece as we can. So I'll be interested in the next steps as we go to it. I know that's not today's item, but at some point, we've got to start talking about how to get more input in there.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Abstain.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, and one abstain.
And Councilmember Nelson had listed her abstention prior to the meeting, and so her abstention will be ruled as an abstention, not a no vote. The resolution does pass. Just a little follow-up to that, if I may. It is probably going to be one of the items that we have on our work session coming up for the end of the month, and so you will be able to look to see some things happening at that, to talk about how we want to do next steps. And as everybody knows, you have the City Hall task force that is functioning, and then you also, under Council Osmis's purview, is the community center task of local option sales tax. So those will be all coming together. And I think that's a good suggestion that both you and Councilmember Mesky talked about, of trying to, how do we meld those two teams so that we now have one team working collaboratively, rather than two teams working independent? Because I think the sooner we can make collaboration work, the more successful this will be. Thank you to the task force for the work that you put into this, and thank you to staff too for the work that you've done. So additional discussion, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually think that even though they may be combined as two buildings, two functions within one connected building, there are two very different uses for those buildings still. And I think that there is still a need to have the community center task force explore what they want to have happening within the portion of the community center. And I think that the City Hall functions are very different, and I could foresee the City Hall task force still continuing to explore what those options might be, and yet bringing that together and blending and mixing what common space there might be and opportunities and things. But I do see that there is still work that we can all do. I do want to make the full council aware that on September 27th, we are going to be doing visits of various city halls, and hopefully, some of those will include city halls that are connected with the community center, and I think those are locations that the community center folks have already visited. But if you want to mark your calendar, folks would be welcome to attend that meeting with us, that tour with us. So that'd be September 27th. I'm sure more information will be coming out, but if you want to hold that on your calendar, that'd be great.
Okay. And then, there was an idea of another resolution that I kind of split out, so can somebody make that resolution?
To be honest, Mayor, members of the council, I'm not sure I caught everything that Councilmember Schwantus wanted to accomplish, so I would defer to her for now.
Okay, that would be great. Thank, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. So at the last city council meeting, in discussion of the local option sales tax projects, we had approved a construction manager at risk for those projects, and listed all of the projects, and we listed the community center as an alternate project to have bid, correct? And so now, if, it would make sense if we are going to have them on one site in one connected building, that we use the same construction manager at risk for the full site work that's done. So there would be no need then to do the bid to include the community center, correct? So does that take a resolution or a motion?
I believe that takes a resolution, because it was put in place by a resolution. I will defer to legal counsel.
So basically, it's removing the community center as the alternate from the previous resolution.
Okay, so that sounds to me like a, maybe a resolution to amend the previous resolution? To, yeah, I think, exactly.
Perfect.
Could you introduce that?
I make that motion for the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the resolution that included the community center as an alternate, discussion. Councilwoman Nelson.
I think the way the motion was done, it allowed for that to be removed if a decision was made on the City Hall. So I think, since they haven't gone out yet, that it probably makes sense to do it now, but I think the way that other motion was done was to make sure that this was available to do.
I think, my view of it is, is it then removes that responsibility from the administrator to have it in two separate documents, but then also, it doesn't, the people who will be bidding on that or submitting their requests would not have to remove that, or would not have to put that there to just simply be removed. So we do it proactively ahead of time. Are you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next consideration, a state temporary liquor permit, Foxhole Brew House. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Foxhole Brew House has plans to sell alcohol during the Foxtoberfest on September 28th, and they have made application for a state application and permit for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license. And I would offer, or recommend approval of said license.
So moved. Motion made and seconded, discussion. This is liquor, so it requires, it's a simple motion, but it requires a roll call because it involves alcohol. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Councilmember, I mean, consideration of off-sale intoxicating liquor license, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the new owners of the Westside Liquor West request to hold an off-sale intoxicating liquor license located at 3001 First Avenue Northwest under the name Patrola LLC, doing business as Westside Market and Liquor. They recently purchased this facility on August 2nd of 2019, and it is my recommendation to approve the intoxicating liquor license.
So moved. Motion made and seconded to approve Westside Market liquor license. Again, this is a motion, but it takes a roll call because it involves alcohol. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmis.
Aye. Could I just get a clarification on where this is?
That is, it's out on 30th Street, County, by the Valleybrook Estates.
County Road 5.
Right. I just, the 3001 First Avenue Northwest threw me off. I was thinking it would be a 100 number, but I suppose it faces 30th Avenue then, sure. Aye. Okay.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next is consideration of additional approvals for the Willamette Project. I don't know, am I going to you? Legal counsel, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There's two items today. I think it makes sense on this one to just take them one at a time. The first item is, the recommendation is that the city council approve an amendment to the master cooperation agreement between all the public partners, the city, MNDOT, Candyway County, and BNSF Railway Company regarding the Y project. This amendment, in large part, almost entirely does not change any city obligations under the cooperative project. The one amendment, and this is kind of just cleaning things up, is the way the project has evolved since the contract was originally approved in December. The one change that does affect the city is it allows the first closing to occur anytime as late as the end of September 2019, so the end of this month. The rest of the changes reflect, as far as I can tell, changes in how the MNDOT and BNSF land transfers are going to be accomplished between them. However, because the city is a party to that agreement, the city needs to formally approve this amendment as well. So the recommendation is that the council pass the resolution approving this amendment and authorize the mayor and administrator to sign the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution for amendment number one of the master cooperative agreement with MNDOT, Candyway County, and Burlington and Lawrence, Santa Fe, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of city property to Burlington and Lawrence, Santa Fe, set a public hearing for September 16th. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for to introduce conveyance of city property to Burlington and Lawrence, Santa Fe, and public hearing for September 16th, discussion. Hold favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Was opposed? That motion does carry. For the council's information, we ended up with two separate city administrators through this process, and to clean everything up, there will be a signing after the meeting on September 16th, so that City Administrator Grammets and myself will be the two signatories on the documents. So all the documents have the same city administrator and the mayor, rather than having different city administrators and different mayors. I'm sorry, different, having the same mayor and different city administrators, just to smoothen everything together, so the council's aware that that will happen, pending action on the 16th. Okay? Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other thing, Councilmember Nelson alluded to it in her report on the Finance Committee, is the budget. I will be presenting the budget to the full council on the 16th at the council meeting. That will be done. We are still waiting on getting the documents and all the numbers for the budget, so we're still working on that. And so it was the recommendation of Mr. Olkins and the city administrator and myself in consultation with Councilmember Nelson as the finance chair, so that will be coming to you directly to the council meeting on the 16th. We have never done that before, and so we'll be charting new ground here, but we don't have the information prepared currently, because we're still waiting on some numbers to come in, so we know the exact number on the tax valuation for the city. And so that's why that will be happening that way. So with that, councilmember announcements. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School started today, so there's a lot of little kids walking on the street, so pay attention.
Councilmember Mesky, pass. Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you. Just a reminder, September 27th, there will be the City Hall tour.
Councilmember Davis.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Osmis.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Palmer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a reminder to the Finance Committee, we are meeting on Thursday with that, and we will be scheduling some special meetings following receiving the information from the budget from the mayor, so we won't be asked to vote on anything on the 16th. And I believe that agreed to do a special city council meeting on the 30th to vote on, that we get our levy done before the end of the month, before our other meeting is scheduled, so.
Because that meeting will happen on the 30th, where you'll have to, we'll have to have a special meeting of the council, or the special Finance Committee meeting with the full council in attendance, to where you would ratify your levy, whatever levy limit that you want to put on, would be put on. And so just understand that you're going to get the documents on the 16th. And so from the 16th to the 30th, that's really a quick amount of time to get all that work done. So just remember that, I mean, you're going to get, you know, they're going to get you information, and there's going to be a lot of work to do, so. I don't have it yet myself, and so I have a lot of work to do yet too. So I'm in the same position you are. I have not yet received the budget, so. I believe I was going to, I should have it yet this week, I believe, right? Hopefully? Anything else for the good of the order? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Or adjourned.